The bar has been raised.
Just remember, they were responding to a challenge that was already, they're just responding. Just saying. Item number two, adoption of the agenda.
That's the best. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I move we adopt the agenda as published. Second?
Motion second to adopt the agenda as published. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move to item 5A and ask Christina to come on up.
Do you approve the consent agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. I probably should do the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I move we approve the consent agenda as published for the mayor to sign and clerk to the test. Second?
I have a motion in a second. See? I knew you were gonna do that. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavner.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried. Thank you for being here, Christina.
Of course.
We are at 5A.
Madam Mayor, members of council, you were just so excited to get me up here, weren't you?
I really was.
Alright, so I'm here this evening to provide you an update on where we are with self-funding. I am pleased to announce we are on track. I was on the phone this morning with Department of Insurance, so we have supplied them with majority of the required documents, eighteen required steps in their plan, and we are making our way through that. I've reached out to Mercer. There are a couple of things that are required from them. They're working on the final documents that are needed. I've communicated that with Department of Insurance. We've acquired the fidelity bond that's required for Department of Insurance and sent that over to them. The trust agreement that's come in front of you and been approved has also been sent over. So, a lot of work has been done, a lot of work still to do, though. So, what will be coming before you here in just a little bit is a budget amendment for spending authority for the reserve amount, and I'll be back in front of you here in just a little bit for that. But then, we also have submitted a check request for the registration fee for the Department of Insurance to officially review the documents that have been submitted to them, which was presented to council when I first came to you with this idea of self-funding. Then, I have met with Mercer to make sure that we have met all of the requirements of the Department of Insurance and completed all the documents needed. I also have a meeting scheduled with the Department of Insurance on October 8th to make sure they've received everything that's required and address any issues, concerns, or questions that they may have. I didn't want to wait until they've reviewed the documents and then see if they had questions. I want to engage in that conversation ahead of time and make sure that we keep that open dialogue as we go along, so that I'm aware of any obstacles, hurdles, or questions that they may have, hopefully ahead of any issues.
Madam Mayor. One real quick question. Is, reminding me, is Mercer the entity that will help facilitate some of the administration?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we will do the day-to-day, the paying of the claims. Blue Cross will be adjudicating the claims, but Mercer will assist in all of those operations as well.
Thanks.
So, that is one of the pieces that we are putting together, is agreements with the trust, with Mercer, Legal, Accounting Services, the admin services that HR will provide for the trust. Those are the last minute agreements that we are going to be putting together and are finalizing currently, to make sure that we have all of those in place and we have all those services contracted with the trust.
And those come back to us?
Those agreements would not necessarily come back to the council. I certainly can bring them before you if you'd like. We are doing a legal review of them. We're having our trust attorney review them. The one document or the one agreement that may come back before you, if at a minimum, we'll have a legal review on the city's behalf, is the admin services that are provided by Human Resources. But the accounting services, it's a third-party provider between the trust. Mercer is a third-party administrator in the trust, so I don't know that there's a need to bring it back before council, but I certainly can do so if you'd like.
I'm not suggesting that. I was just trying to make sure I'm understanding the relationship of who's hiring who, and it sounds like it's the trust engaging these entities.
Correct. We have begun preparing for open enrollment, so those communications will start going out here relatively soon, and then working on the logistics of putting all of these measures in place. We will work to schedule the Board of Trustee meetings, and as soon as I approve for spending authority for the reserve amount, then I have the ability to open up the trust account. So, still a lot of work to do. A lot of work has been done, but we are on track. So, I will stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Christina. Yes, Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Christina. Someone asked me if we were the first one to go through it. I didn't realize that the legislature had just passed the bill this last year to require registration. I didn't know if other entities were already registering, or if we're the first one that's going through that's required to register, or if that was even an accurate statement.
I'm not aware that that's an accurate statement. To my knowledge, it has been required of all government employers, because we aren't governed by ERISA, to file with the Department of Insurance for at least the last several years.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Alright.
Thank you. Okay, item 5B. Counsel, I will report from here. This is a discussion about the business hours of City Hall. Some of the outcomes that we have been having in our employee engagement survey, and some of the results that we're seeing in our exit interviews are employees want greater flexible work hours. And so, our team started looking at that and having discussions. Directors brought feedback, also verifying that there is a real sincere interest in flexible work hours. And the smaller departments, because of the numbers, have a hard time with that. So, it would need to have a consistent application of what those business work hours would be. So, our team went about looking at first talking to employees on what is the desire, the interest, and a more flexible work schedule, and then started tracking traffic throughout the week, and when the high traffic areas are, when the lows are, and that sort of thing. We also had two departments talking with customers. As they came in, what they thought about extended hours so that they could be on the regular eight-to-five work day. So, we found that Friday afternoon had a drop-off in visits and phone calls in several departments. Certainly, in the mayor's office, we average just one external call or visit during the hours from one to five on Friday afternoons. Fire averaged four phone calls and one walk-in on Fridays. Legal, HR, IT see a significant drop-off, and I think they are support departments, and that is kind of a drop-off even in the employee activity. The community development sees a 50% reduction in their overall customers on Fridays. Both our primary departments of police or for parks and community development said a lot of what they do can be managed as well in messaging to customers on a different business hours for City Hall, and those adjustments can be done. In our utility billing, they're fairly consistent, and they see that a lot of their business happens during the lunch hour. And that lunch hour flexes between 11:30 and 1:30 primarily. And they see a severe drop-off, like to nothing after 3 o'clock. So, here are some of the outcomes. So, what our team looked at is said, we don't want to change the number of hours that City Hall is open, but we would like to pilot a new business hours for City Hall from 8 to 6, Monday through Thursday, and a 8 to 1 on Fridays, to give opportunities for our workforce to have greater flexibility in those swing times and answer something that has been a desired opportunity as an employee for the city. So, this keeps us open the same number of hours. It does provide greater flexibility to our citizens. In those surveys, that both our utility billing and Clerk's Office asked is, would you be able to, would you like to see an extended hour at the end of the day, and would you utilize it? So, 72% would prefer the additional hour from 5 to 6 to conduct their business, from the 50 people that did respond to the questionnaire. I'm just giving you this information to get you to start thinking about it, and what we would like to do is put a poll out to our citizens to let them weigh in on next door, as to if they see this as an opportunity for that additional hour of business, that they don't have to take off during the work day, that they can stop by and do any of their business with the city on their way home from work, and if that would make it more business-friendly for the customers that do come into City Hall. We, like I said, we could do a poll and then have a public comment, and a public hearing, per se, next week, and ask for citizens to come in. We wouldn't want to do it until November. Our idea of the pilot would be from November to December, to give an opportunity to really see if it works. If it doesn't, we would go back January 1 to the regular schedule. And so, with that, I would just open it up and get initial thoughts. This is just informational at this point, to see if council is interested enough that we can start asking our citizens what they think, other than those that come in our doors.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I think it's a great idea for both the public and for the employees. I know, you know, my husband works a shift that during the summer, they get off early on Fridays, and it's beneficial for our family, so I'm sure that the employees would appreciate that part of it. My biggest concern, I guess, would be, you know, making sure that every employee is okay with it, because they, if they have a kid in daycare, most daycares close at 6 o'clock. So, if they're now scheduled to work until 6 o'clock, they cannot also pick their child up from daycare if they don't have somebody else to do that. So, I think that that would be my only concern, is making sure that it's okay with the people that are being forced into this different situation, even though I do believe it would be better for most of them. And then, I think the extra hour for the citizens to come in is fabulous, because it is hard to get somewhere by 5 if you work till 5. Thank you for bringing this.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments. And we have had those discussions among the departments with their employees on, the directors do believe that they can work through any of those issues where someone would have a challenge. They would still get their work hours in, but it would look a little bit different.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I think maybe in departments where there's the bandwidth, having some in at 8 and out at 5, and some in at 9 and out at 6, as opposed to be able to have those extended hours. And I just hate to be a citizen at 2 o'clock on a Friday needing to conduct some business with the city and kind of being out of luck until Monday. I understand that there's a severe drop-off, but I think it's kind of a role of government to be available, at least during what is a normal business hours for the rest of the world.
And I would say that the rest of the world is starting to transition, too. And you see that in other businesses where they're doing the 4:10s and Fridays off. We did discuss that originally. We kind of shied away from that, thinking, yeah, we do need to have those business hours on Friday for those that do have it. And I think we can enhance the availability of government to our citizens, not just working on a regular business schedule, because that's the same schedule they're working on, but being accessible to them in extended hours as well. Other comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
It almost sounds like we've got two issues here. One is, which is what I applaud of you and your leadership team, to say, how can we best be responsive to our citizens? If that's evolving our hours to benefit them, I think that's a very important conversation, one that should be had separate about what the executive branch can do in terms of operations to meet the demands of our employees. Again, tailoring schedules, that's not council's lane. That's executive branch's lane. And we've heard that time and time again. So, that piece, I don't quite know why, is coming before us. And that's a decision that you can make to best meet the needs of the city. Our citizens have expectations. I think it's important that we meet them. At the same time, I applaud you as a mayor to respond to our employees' needs that need to have changing and shifting schedules. I think that's being a responsive CEO, but they're separate from what we're doing to meet the needs of our citizens. So, I think having a discussion with our public about what we can better do to meet their needs, that makes a lot of sense to me, but I think should be held separately about how we can evolve City Hall's schedule to better accommodate our employees.
Well, the reason hours of operation are in front of you is because it is a policy. So, if it was the executive branch, we would be piloting this and seeing how it works, because it is a balance between how we can best serve our citizens, but we have a changing dynamic in workforce and workforce, and looking at retention, and being responsive to our employees that provide service to our public as well. They go hand and glove, and they go hand and glove in this particular scenario, because our operation hours in City Hall has to be the same, because you have support services that have to be here when employees are here and when the hours are open for City Hall. And those departments then wouldn't have an opportunity to flex work schedules like the larger ones do. So, you do have to have a consistency across the board. We have tried to look at what kind of impact they were, we would have. They're also looking at, why do people come into City Hall and get an idea of what we can be doing more to serve them electronically or on the website to give information that they might need, or online business, e-business type of scenarios as well. So, we are trying to look first to our customer, but we also are trying to respond to our employees. And in this ever-changing workforce, time with family and time with doing their business with regular businesses that work 8 to 5, they would like that time as well. So, trying to balance both.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I'm generally supportive of this discussion, for sure. I think it's interesting, at the very least. I do have one question. When you mentioned that you sent out an email to employees, was that a certain group, or is that all employees, or a certain group of employees?
If I said that, it was misstated. We did not send an email out to employees. Directors have been having conversations with their staffs during staff meetings, trying to get a temperature of what we're seeing in our city surveys and our exit interviews, and truthing that first, to see, is there a sincere desire, and there's been enthusiastic desire, but no, we haven't done anything officially in a survey to the employees, and we haven't done any outreach beyond the two departments that have been asking their customers that they come in.
Follow-up? And I could have misheard as well, so certainly it could be on me. But I would love to hear what our employees have to say about this, as well as the general public. Data and that type of information doesn't lie, and it's tough for me to be sitting in this seat, having an opinion when it probably won't affect me very much. And so, very interested to see what the public has to say, very interested, even more interested to see what our employees have to say about it.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I think it's a great idea. I love the fact that you're doing a pilot program. I know when we used to start at 6 o'clock, between 5 and 6, I can't count how many people I gave directions to, to departments that were closed. And so, I think it could be a great benefit to our citizens, and I'm excited to see what the results is in the information you gather.
Thank you. Any other comment? So, I do want to get an indication on if there is an interest by the city council for us to start. I've heard from several of you, to poll the, on next door, and ask the directors to get more information, more feedback from their staffs. And we can compile that in a report before city council meeting, and certainly, our directors can be available for any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
That's, it's a great idea.
Okay.
Gathering more information to make an informed decision seems to make the most sense. And if legal is a part of that, and how something like that would be facilitated with amending policy to contemplate a pilot program, if a November 1 launch date is a potential for whatever the change could be, then that we're ready to hit the ground running with language to review to make that a possibility.
We will bring that back next week. Thank you. Item 5C is under city council discussion, and Mr. Kavner will be leading this.
Right.
Attaboy. This is serious business now.
At least a face.
Allows me to look jaw in the eye.
Eye contact.
That's right.
Respect.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good to be before you this afternoon, talking all things parking in our homes. As you may recall, a month and change ago, I came before you, said, heard from some constituents, are confused about what they can and can't park on their driveway, would like a change, are you as a body interested in learning more, much like our previous conversation, go, pull together more information, come back, make a decision about where we want to go. So, I pulled together a committee that included Emily Kane from Legal, Rich Everett from our code enforcement, Transportation Commission, David Ballard, who's here today, Cindy Romans, who manages a homeowners association, Red Door, H. Property Management, and myself, all met a little over a week ago. We talked for about 90 minutes and covered a whole host of topics, particularly around parking in your driveway. There's two items that I think should be before you. One is a copy of code that we're going to be talking a little bit about. The second one was provided by Rich and our code enforcement, and it is a, correct, it is a unique photographic journey of code violations within Meridian. Everything from the very germane, a boat parked into a driveway, spoiler, when you get to the end, there is basically parking lots existing on people's residential property. And I appreciated Rich really kind of giving us a flavor as to what his department sees within their role. Couple of things that came up that I think is important for you to know. I think everybody that was there recognized that this is an issue, but nobody quite knows how to handle it. As Emily pointed out, the city council in 2009 first looked at this, and kind of came to a hard conclusion that this is a hard issue to wrestle with, and more information needed to be found, and that we should look at this at a later point in time. Fast forward 10 years later, we're having the same conversation. A couple of things that I think is important for me to also share with you, because I've been one pretty quick to talk about, there's no real public safety benefit with this code as written. And I appreciate Ms. Kane and code enforcement saying, well, the UDC isn't really designed about public safety. It's more about quality of life, and that's why we have it in place, is to create for an overall better quality of life. One of the reasons why our code can be challenging is the distinction in our code and UDC between storage and parking. So, storage happens on your driveway, parking happens on the street, and because of that, we prohibit storing of non-licensed vehicles or motorcycles on our driveway and everything else under the sun, your boats, your trailers, et cetera. So, I think that's sometimes where the disconnect can come. We discussed this, like I said, for about an hour and a half, without any real consensus in terms of city council, you need to do X. A couple of things that came up, though, that I think are important to know, is that any change could likely result in a change in enforcement. Rich was concerned that it may require more resources on their part, larger enforcement. I think that all remains to be seen, but that was a concern that was shared by Rich. I think your homeowners associations would prefer to leave this as-is. Many HOAs, we learned, don't have an enforcement mechanism outside of a letter, trying to encourage HOAs to make a change, and thus, they rely, and you'll hear, you've heard this, I think, from code enforcement, our, some of our homeowners associations rely on code enforcement to enforce HOA violations that are also a violation of code. So, they would prefer, I think, to keep things as-is. So, a couple of options. We could be done with this exercise and just leave it as-is. We could fully repeal it. I wouldn't suggest that. I think there was a lot of concern that if that happened, we would turn our driveways, everybody's driveways, into full-fledged parking lots. There was a recommendation, or suggestion, I should say, very tongue-in-cheek from Ms. Kane, that says, just ban all parking on the streets as well, and that would be in line with what you couldn't do in a driveway. I didn't get a sense from this body. There would be a lot of reception to that, but that was something that came up. And the fourth item would be, is to modify the code. And if we were, there's a couple of suggestions that I would make. One is, you'll see throughout this, there is reference to parking, but because it's really what we're talking about is storage, I just think some word changes to make that fall in line with really what the use is, would maybe make it less confusing for our citizens. The second piece, and ultimately, I think the suggestion that I would make, is that we would modify this piece of code to either prohibit the use after a 72-hour period, or to grant that use for 72 hours. So, that would essentially mean is the same ability to park your boat, your trailer, your razor on the public street could then be granted to you on your house. And that would really serve what I think is the intended purpose, is I think most people are not parking their boats or their trailers on their driveway permanently. They are parking them to load them up before they head up to the lake, to service, to do this, and to do that. Again, we got home from our cabin on Sunday night. I'm going to go put in my storage unit on Monday. I want to be able to park it overnight. Again, maybe it's, we've got a big family vacation. We want to load it up for a couple of days. I think that's, a modification like that would meet what I think is the intended use of people who are unknowingly violating code. In addition, those people are going to park it on the street, so taking that off the street, I think, also provides a certain level of increased public safety. I, like I said, I know in my neighborhood, a neighbor parks his RV around a blind corner. It's really, really challenging, and this end of the year, beginning of the school year, when he's moving his RV in and out, because you can't see if any pedestrians are coming. So, I think it would actually also increase the public safety. So I think it would actually also increase the public safety. The piece that we heard from Code Enforcement about the challenge of enforcing is something that I'd like, if we were going to make a change, that we would have a public hearing and let Code Enforcement come in and speak to that. They're in that day in and day out, I'm not, I don't think it would be appropriate for me to speculate, except for to say that all of our, you know, code is largely complaint-driven. And so if my neighbor has turned his driveway into a parking lot for razors, I'm going to call Code Enforcement to enforce that, just like if they were parking it on the street for weeks at a time. I don't want to, maybe Mr. Neri can chime in, there is a little piece of concern about the ability to enforce those code violations, if they're existing on your driveway, and Code Enforcement's ability to actually come on to the property, to issue a notification or a citation. And so, again, I don't know if Mr. Neri wants to touch base on that, or if that's something that if we would want to move forward, we could have addressed at the public hearing.
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Cavanagh, yeah, I mean, there are probably two things about the driveway issue that will be problematic and that we would have to work through. First, of course, the seventy-two hours can be problematic on the street, people tend to sometimes move them. There's a case out of another part of the country about shocking tires, so that hasn't been resolved, you know, countrywide yet. But the bigger concern is, if a person parked a car there on a Friday, and we say we took a photograph and came back on Monday, we would have no idea whether they moved it during the weekend. So there may be some enforcement issues to work through, not to say we couldn't do it, I'm just saying that's an issue to be aware of. The other is serving in our private property, I'm not super concerned about serving the citation, I think that one would be okay. It would be ending the private property for any other purpose, I think would be necessary for a warrant. But I think if we're just going to the door, knocking the door to serve a citation, I think we'd be fine.
And, Madam Mayor, members of council, I think it's also important to note, this isn't a silver bullet solution. I mean, this is something, again, council was dealing with ten years ago and hasn't been resolved. My recommendations are merely, after just looking at this, this is the best crack to solve the problem for, I think, the majority of people who are unknowingly violating the law. To me, it's a common sense change, and as I mentioned when I started this process, again, I've got a boat, I've got an RV, I don't have any, I don't have a dog in this fight, this is just more of trying to respond to what I've heard from our citizens, who, again, want to follow the law, but kind of scratch their head when it comes to this particular piece. Mr. Ballard's here, he can, again, both as chairman of our Transportation Commission, can chime in, if anything he thought maybe I was a little off-base on, I'd love to give him at least the opportunity to provide any comments or feedback. I really respect his opinion, he does a great job as chairing that commission. But I'm also happy to answer any questions, if you have them, and if not, maybe request your direction to maybe work with Legal to bring back something in a more finalized version that we could share with the public, engage their feedback.
Okay, council, any comments, questions, thoughts to share?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Sure, Luke, great job. From the July eighteenth memo to today, the committee work, I think, has brought a well-formed option list to us on an important issue. It sounds like, if the recommendation amongst the pros and cons of the choices is to amend code, to allow parking to occur on a driveway for up to three days, similar to the street, that one of the ancillary benefits would be, once everyone knows that, that they would now choose to park that boat and RV in that driveway for the weekend, off the streets, making it more safe, and greater vision, and it's probably an extra benefit, it sounds like, which seems to make great sense. As you weighed those options, did you and your group, or Mr. Ballard, have any sound argument as to why that wouldn't make sense? Do the three days in the driveway, just like three days in the street?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Ballard can chime in as well. I think the biggest concerns really stem from Rich, and how are we going to have to enforce that? And I think there was also some concern that now folks who knowingly follow the law, because they've heard from Code Enforcement, you know, kind of schedule their travel to get in at a point in time that they can take those, you know, property to the proper storage unit, and that potentially, you would invite more of that onto the driveway than maybe you would have had before. It's a fair point. To me, this is just my personal opinion, I would rather have those things parked in the driveway than parked in the street. I just think that's a better place for them. But you could have more people, again, somebody gets home Friday night and intends to take it to, you know, their storage unit on Saturday, now leaves it in their driveway till Monday. It's possible. Now, if Mr. Ballard, I'd like to invite him up, he's been a real valuable asset through this process, and allow him to answer any questions and chime in.
David, thank you for joining us.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Luke had, or Mr. Cavanagh had invited me to this committee, and it was quite interesting, and a very robust conversation, because we did explore many avenues. And I guess the one question for me was, is that the role of city government to regulate, if you will, what happens on that part of your personal property, whether it's storing or parking? And there was, you can go either way on that question. And part of it has to deal with value of property, part of it has to do with just the neighborhood itself, and I think part of it has to do with safety. Where is a good place to put vehicles, if you will? But I came down that part of the role of government as well is a mechanism to protect property. Now, you invite some regulation, that goes with the job. But overall, I thought it was a very good conversation to talk about what's going on in the neighborhood, what's going on in the community, and how better serve the citizens. And so Mr. Cavanagh invited, if you would, some more conversation, because I think it takes that. But at the end of the day, I kind of like some regulation, knowing what might be parked next to me, what I can and can't do on my property, and ability to have that redressed or remedied, if those regulations aren't complied with or enforced. And that calls for a bigger job for our officers, I get that. But I come down on the side of, it's part of our community, and I think we have the opportunity to make those rules. Questions?
Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Just a comment, if I understood it right, it sounds like this recommendation is a lighter touch of government, allowing something to occur that is prohibited under our current code?
I believe that's correct. And maybe Mr. Cavanagh's suggestion would be a little more clarity, and... Already approving what goes on, in the sense that, okay, you're going to load/unload, you're going to park there overnight, and maybe it brings a little more definition or clarity to that regulation.
Interesting.
As always, I appreciate the opportunity to address you, thank you.
Now you know why it hasn't really been solved, as Mr. Cavanagh said, for ten years. It's a conversation that can go in a number of directions and always turn around to the very same standstill of, how do you enforce it, what is the most reasonable?
Madam Mayor, you hit the nail on the head. I get why previous councils said, just kind of wait on this, it's, you get a what-if scenario, and then you start talking about that for twenty minutes. Which is why, I mean, I try to bring in a lot of people to the table who are a lot smarter on this subject rather than me, which is why I appreciate Mr. Ballard being here, to have Emily, have someone who represents the HOAs, Code Enforcement, the people that Councilmember Burton kind of talked about earlier, when we were talking about the City Hall hours. This decision's not going to impact me, it's going to impact a lot of people, so let's bring the smartest people to the table, come up with, think it's the most common sense decision, and then decide to move forward one way or another.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
This, it is a hard one, and you've got, most people live in, with HOAs, which have rules about this anyway. So we're really talking about a small, kind of a small percentage of homes in Meridian that this would affect, regardless. And I think for the most part, we're talking about boats, because there aren't very many RVs that we're going to fit in a regular-sized driveway. So we're talking about small things. I don't have a problem with it being in the driveway for three days versus on the street for three days and having a car on the street. To me, that provides a safer environment for driving, so I think it's definitely worth a conversation and bringing forth to the public.
Okay. So you will bring this back?
Madam Mayor, I guess with your permission, I'd like to work with the legal department to draft a piece of ordinance language that we'd bring back for our first reading, November, first meeting in November, maybe, second meeting in November? Makes sense?
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 5D is under our Parks Department, and we have Mike.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm here this afternoon to talk about an agreement between the city and MDC that would allow us entry into a property that they control on Broadway, it's owned by UP. There's some irrigation pipe that provides surface water delivery to City Hall, and some folks west of Meridian Road that needs a volunteer tree removed, and some, probably some root augering. We're not quite sure what needs to be done, but we need to get the keys and the permission slip to get in there and assess it and make those repairs. The repairs are covered under our regular operating budget, so with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 6A, under action items, we have fiscal year 2020, first of the season, budget amendment, yeah, on October first.
You know, I thought I'd bring it in. You know, I'm told we're going to go big, right?
I think you have a lot of directors that are going, yes, it's not me.
Yep, so, Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm before you with the first budget amendment of the fiscal year, on the first day of the fiscal year. But this isn't the first time you've seen this. So back in 2016 was when we started talking about self-funding options, and I requested that you consider setting aside funds for this reserve account, which everyone was in agreement with at that time. Todd formally came before you last fiscal year, and you all did agree to that set aside, and currently I'm standing before you so that I can get spending authority to actually move those funds into that trust account.
Thank you, Christina. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
So it sounds like you really don't want us to change our minds.
You certainly can.
Good answer.
Madam Mayor.
You're very gracious. Mr. Cavanagh, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No questions, I just want to thank you again, Christina, I know you and I have not always seen eye-to-eye on the pathway to get here, but I just appreciate your professionalism, your ability to really advocate for our employees, it's well-received and very appreciated.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanagh.
Madam Mayor, I don't know if somebody was, typically the HR liaison would make this motion.
I was looking for the number, but if you are more prepared than me, go right ahead.
I'm not, but I'm happy to at least, Madam Mayor, move that we approve the 2020 budget amendment coming from the Human Resources Department for the self-funding reserves. Do I need to include the dollar amount?
That's what I was looking at.
It is, I thought it was .4 million. One point, one point four million. For $1.4 million.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, just a comment.
Yes.
Christine, I know that you will do this, but I just also want to put it on the record to send council the agendas for these trustee meetings so that it's on our radar as well. I know that we publish it, but I'm sure as all council members can attest, we get a significant amount of email. I want to stay, keep my eyes on this, and so getting an email from you when these are would be very appreciated.
Absolutely.
If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
All ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Joe did that, thank you.
Okay, item 6B is a contract that you just heard about. At council, certainly if you have any questions about it, Mike is still here and available to answer. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the contract for services.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I have that we approve the contract for services between the Meridian Development Corporation and the city, I'm assuming that would be with that, left off, the city of Meridian.
Second?
I have a motion, second, any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item seven is executive session, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Move we go into executive session pursuant to Idaho State Code 742061C.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.